Here. Councilmember Bonilla?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez? And Mayor Gopols?
Here. Welcome to this meeting for May 4th. Going to announce at this time that we are trying a different format. This is our Zoom format for this meeting. There are two ways that you can participate from home if you'd like to make public comments during this meeting. First, you can phone in to participate. The phone number is 408-638-0968. With the conference ID number 836-2678-7202. Press 9 to raise your hand to be called upon. This is all published on the agenda for tonight's meeting. At this point, I'm going to ask the clerk to read the consent calendar.
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number one, city council meeting minutes approval. Item number two, disposition of the property jointly owned by the city attorney and the city of San Mateo. And I neglected to give the city attorney a moment to...
So did I. That was my bad. That was my bad. Let's kick it over to Sean. Hey Sean, do you have anything to say?
I do, in fact. So pursuant to FPPC regulation, I'll be recusing myself from participation in item two because of my personal financial interest in the subject property with my residence. Thank you.
Can we continue to get these? Item number three, seamless Bay Area Integrated Public Transit Support. Item number four, city-owned Poles Xnet Systems Master License Agreement. Item number five, Public Works Backhoe Purchase Contract. Item number six, Clean Water Program Construction Monitoring Services Agreement. Item number seven, Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade Construction Services Amendment. Item number eight, North Shoreview Flood Improvement Construction Management Services Agreement. Item number nine, Underground Flow Equalization System Project Construction Contract. Item number 10, North Shoreview Flood Improvement Project Construction Contract.
Excellent, that is the consent agenda. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the agenda? Is there any member of the public who would like to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I raised my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I would like to pull nine and 10, please.
Nine and 10 are pulled. Any member of the public who would like to pull an item off the agenda?
I have no members of the public on the call.
Alright, then I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Items one through eight.
I'm making motion approved.
There's motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye when the clerk calls on you by name.
Hey, councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Papin?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
You're muted.
Yes, yes.
And Mayor Gopols?
Yes. So that passes unanimously on to agenda items. Is it nine and 10?
Yes.
Alright. Have you received some public comment on those items?
Yes, I believe we did. Madam Clerk, do you want to talk about that or?
I think we all received it and so at this point... Brad is here, hi Brad.
Hello, Mayor.
These are the same things that you brought forward, I believe, a couple of weeks ago? How long ago was it?
April 6th.
Okay, so...
Four weeks ago.
About four weeks ago, we saw these two agenda items. And on April 6th, we granted you the authority to negotiate exclusively with the contractor for these contracts with the hope that you would be able to save us some money. Do you want to report back on what has happened?
I do, Mayor, and I have a presentation for you if I may.
Okay, you came prepared.
I did.
We didn't arrange this.
Okay, so... I was told I could like...
It looks good, we can see it.
Delete all the video, so... There we go. Okay, sorry, let me get this kind of on my screen anyway set up so I can see everything. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I am Brad Underwood, I'm the Public Works Director for the city. Here to talk to you about the contractor warden and about... I put one presentation together because the process is the same for both of these projects. The Underground Flow Equalization System, otherwise known as UFS, and the North Shoreview Levy Pump Station Improvement Project. I'm happy to repeat the presentation if you like it that much. And I actually have Matt Zuka and Azalea Mitch if there's questions that I won't be able to answer there here to help me out.
We can make time after the meeting for you to present it to yourself if you need to.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it. Why am I not forwarding?
And for anybody who's interested, I have about two minutes of comments and then I would be ready to go. No worries, let's do presentation then comments and then we're good.
Okay, here we go. So I just wanted to review the bid process that we went through and the planned specs and estimates are developed for any of our projects and then were advertised for bid. So that includes the technical specs that are different for projects but that procurement and contracting requirements are pretty much the same for all projects. So this is an industry standard for our projects and these main documents, the front-end documents we usually call them, are vetted by the city attorney's office and used on all of our projects. The times, there's addendum, addenda that's issued for projects when during the bidding period if contractors have questions, we respond to those questions and we provide those answers to all bidders so that they have the same information as they did. Then we receive the bids and those bids are reviewed and we determine who the lowest responsible bidder is. We've found that sometimes bidders make mistakes in their submittals and so we need to review those documents that are required to be submitted. Our bidding period on projects is typically 21 days. For both these projects, they were extended. The North Shoreview project was actually four months and we went a little bit longer. One reason was because we were still waiting for the permit from BCDC, which Mayor, I'm glad to tell you, we have now in hand so the project can actually move forward.
Wait, 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 hold on. We have all the permits for the levy?
We have all the permits, yes sir.
Brad, don't hide the lead, Brad. Don't bury the lead, man. Don't bury the lead!
And the UFS project went two months. Both these projects are a little more complex than just a roadway project that we bid a lot of times. So the process is open and fair and it actually yields the lowest responsible bidder, as it should. Staff does not have any involvement in the bidding efforts by the contractors. So one of the extra things we did on the Underground Flow Equalization System project was we went through a pre-qualification process. And that was to decide which contractors could actually submit bids on the project. Why do we do that? Basically, the project size and the complexity with the various items that are involved in the project. As you know, it's a huge underground tank with some mechanisms within that tank. Pumps, there's also some sewer lines that have to be installed. And we also desire to get an experienced and reputable contractor. One of the things we did not want to do because of the sensitivity to the neighbors is get a contractor that actually may be a startup or something where we didn't want to end up with that where we might have issues during the construction. There was actually a pre-submitment meeting offered to those contractors that were interested where there was a project overview that was done. And then we went through the submittal requirements and the evaluation criteria. And that was developed actually based upon the Department of Industrial Relations guidelines. So we used state guidelines to develop those requirements. The submittals were received and reviewed by a team of staff. And that was used to develop that qualifying bid list. That was used to develop the qualifying bid list and only those on that list could submit bids. We did receive seven submittals and five of those contractors were approved to bid the project. So as part of the DIR, it provides very comprehensive guidelines to include for the requirements. And this is just a list of those requirements, so about the contractor. The contractor's history, the organization of the contractor, their experience, their licensing. Can they meet insurance and bonding requirements? Can they financially complete the project? Do they have the backing to complete the project? And is there any history of litigation, claims or other adverse actions? Their safety record, obviously very important to us. And then there's reference checks that are made on each of these, each of the contractors. So again, the past city council action was on April 6th, 2020, where staff recommended the city and the city council approved 4 to 1 to reject all bids, to authorize staff to negotiate with the lowest responsible bidder. And this recommendation was brought to you and we vetted it with the city attorney's office before we made that recommendation. So we made sure we were on firm ground to be able to do that. And so why did we make those recommendations? Both the projects exceeded engineers' estimates, so we were trying to think outside the box. How can we bring the maximum savings back to the city? So we thought we could achieve greater savings by going this method. The lowest responsible bidder, when we reached out to him, was willing to work with us and provide us 100% of anticipated savings of any kind of value engineering items that the contractor brought forward prior to award. And then if negotiations had occurred after contract award, we would have still achieved the savings but it would only have been 50% of what the contractor brought forward. So again, the contract negotiations were being made to reduce the original bid amount by the lowest responsible bidder and this is allowed by the UNI code. We did the value engineering ideas were based on construction ideas from Anderson Pacific, not the actual designers of the project, so the contractor actually brought these ideas forward. And they were vetted with the designers and the city staff. The savings from the value engineering, you know, we achieved some savings on both projects but it would not have achieved something that would have reduced the amount to the bid of the second lowest bidder. This actually was a risk to both parties. For the city, upon rejecting the bids, the contractor was released of his bid bond. So the contractor could have walked away from even talking to us about this. For the contractor, the risk to the contractor is that, you know, we still need to award the contract to them. So if that doesn't happen, then the contractor is out that. And I just will say that if we hadn't gone through this process, the city staff would have brought the lowest responsible bidder, who is the same contractor, to you for an award of the contract. Both parties have acted in good faith during this process. And then I'll just go through a little bit of the negotiations and what we discovered. So there's a couple of items on the North Shoreview project that we're going to be able to achieve savings on. One is the soil treatment. So that actually allows us to reuse the excavated soil for backfill by treating it with lime treatment to stabilize it. And we're actually doing that out at the wastewater treatment plant project right now. It also eliminates over 2,000 truckloads of import and export. So some greenhouse gas savings for the city as well as some lessening traffic impacts in the area. Shoring modifications, the contractor actually saw this as well. There was actually design in the project, now the contractor will be responsible for that design. So we gave it flexibility in that. And there was concern that there was some conflict of the shoring system that was designed by the designer with the pile installation. So we achieved a total reduction of the bid of $400,000. And if we'd have done this after the award of the contract, we would have yielded only 50% of that or $200,000. Just to remind you of the UFS project. So again, it's around the event center on Saratoga Drive in Delaware. We're going to have sewer lines installed. The initial process was going to be actually cut and open cut process where you dig up the street and lay the pipeline in. The contractor offered a micro tunneling option, which was vetted by the designers as well and will work. There's a lot of benefits to that, including some reductions of impacts to the residents and reducing the need of dewatering efforts. As you see in the yellow box there, that's where the underground tank is going to go. These are the items for the that were found during the Underground Flow Equalization Project negotiations. So the micro tunneling, as I said. The diversion structure was actually going to be a cast-in-place, so there's a pre-cast diversion structure. There's a replacement of the backup alarms. There was going to be, on the surface above the tank was going to be a porous concrete material. Now we're going to go to asphalt porous concrete material. The micro piles were adjusted in length. And then we're going to also be able to store some of the backfill or the excavation, excavated material that we take out of the site so we can return that to the site as backfill rather than the contractor hauling it off to somewhere far away and bringing different material back. And then if things line up well with the Foster City Levy project, there's an allowance for future savings. So in other words, the contractor will have to travel so far to haul the material. So there's some additional savings there as well as with the native backfill allowance. So a definite $1.29 million savings in the project with the potential of $600,000 more. So the contract award and implementation. This is a standard construction contract that we utilize for all our projects. We've included a 10% contingency for potential unforeseen conditions that we... It's a standard percentage that we usually use on all our projects. We have actually a construction management for both these projects. They're a third party that will inspect and monitor the work. They'll be on the site full-time. Of course, these projects, you know, have some sensitivities around both either environmental or with the residential areas nearby. And staff implemented a fair process through this. You know, the low bidder is an experienced and reputable contractor. We believe this effort has actually improved project implementation and definitely maximized reduction to cost. Even on the UFS project, if we had done this after the fact instead of the $1.2 million, it would have been $600,000. So we recommend that you award the following contract standards from Pacific for... Just happens to be the same contractor, which is kind of unique, I guess, in this circumstance. The Underground Flow Equalization System and the North Shoreview Levy Pump Station Improvement Projects. Both contracts are less than the original bid. And with that, I thank you and I'm here to take any questions.
Thank you for your efforts, Brad, appreciate it very much and thank you for the presentation. Rick, you had questions?
Yeah, well, I have comments. I do have one question but I'll ask that at the end. My comments are that previously, a month ago, I voted no on both of these projects and I'll explain why. But first, I want to say that it was not because I don't support these projects. I actually worked to get these projects to where they are, supported them every inch of the way, went to Washington DC and spoke at FEMA with Brad and Diane was with me. And I've done a lot to get these things this far. And I do not object at all to the purposes for these intended projects. And I'm glad to see that we actually have achieved some cost savings in the process. That said, I still have objections because I believe that the actual bidding process itself has been irregular. That I and other people who wrote comments last week and last month and today feel that. And those are people who work in this industry every day. Okay, those commenters. So I feel that the process was lacking in transparency, that it did not follow a normal path. So that's my objection, is how we got here today in the process, the bidding process itself. So and the only question I have is, are we going to have a prevailing wage monitor on these projects?
We do not have that set up at this time.
Do we plan to?
We have not discussed that, if that's something the council would like us to entertain, I guess we could look into that.
Okay, well, I'd like to ask if any members of the council would consider asking for prevailing wage monitoring on this project. That's all for me, thanks. Trish, do we have any public comment? You're muted.
Okay, there I am. I'm looking right now and in our attendees, I see no hands raised at this time. So give it another second in case someone wants to...
Sure, I'll see if there's any other questions or comments from the council before we give it one last opportunity for public comment.
I have a question.
Councilmember Lee, you have a question? Go ahead.
I'm curious to learn more about what a prevailing wage monitor is and how that would... Would that impose an additional cost or how is that structured?
You know, we've actually done that on the wastewater treatment plant, the main project, the main wastewater treatment plant. It does cost extra. The contractors are required to pay prevailing wages on our projects and as such, they're required to submit their certified payrolls to the Department of Industrial Relations with the state. And so a prevailing wage monitoring would be a third party that would look at those documents as well and monitor that and most likely do some interviews with some of the employees on-site as well. So it's just another check. You know, again, the DIR is the main source of oversight of this, making sure prevailing wages are met. And we actually have them, the contractor has to have a DIR number and they submit that with their bid and we always, that's one of the things staff always checks to see if there's any infractions with the DIR.
Do representatives of the trades ever go out to job sites like this to interview employees in addition to a monitor that's on-site?
I believe that that does occur at times.
In the past, what sort of triggers for having our own monitor associated with a specific project? Is there a threshold for certain conditions? How does, in the past, has a decision like this been made?
It was only made, it's only been made one time in my, I've been in my career in 34 years and that was with the wastewater treatment plant project. And I believe just the size of that project and the complexity of it was what drove the council to request that. If a different council owner has a different recollection, I'm happy to let them speak.
Hi, Azalea Mitch here. Could I add something to that?
Please, Azalea, thank you for joining the conversation.
Great, thank you. So as Brad mentioned, we do have actually a contract with a third-party labor compliance firm, with two of them. And because we are hoping to use WHIPYA loan money to pay for the UFS project, we were planning on using the same format for the labor compliance.
Great. That's good news. Okay, that answers that question.
Please, sure. So I just want a couple of things. One is, yes, the Department of Industrial Relations does get these documents but no, they don't have enough people to actually review them. They only act when they actually get a complaint and then they go through the documents. This is the importance of having a prevailing wage monitor on the site. Yes, union reps do normally come through, especially on our sewer project where we have the project labor agreement. It is a union-friendly job. The particular contractor that I think we're about to award these projects to is known by the building trades representatives to be hostile, seeking to preclude them from entering the job sites and speaking to their employers. So that's why it would be good to have a prevailing wage monitor, a labor compliance enforcement contractor, to collect this information and actually examine it. Because from my experience, there can be a lot of irregularities on prevailing wage reports and they should be looked at. Thank you.
Azalea, did I misinterpret what you said? I'm going to kick it over to Diane in just a second.
No, so you're correct. I mean, we have the two firms already working with us on the treatment plant and the plan was to use them as well for UFS because these two projects will be funded through WHIPYA.
That's great, good news. Okay, Diane, go ahead.
Thank you.
It is the same outfit you're already using, you're going to use on this one for wage compliance?
We have two, we have two firms, so there are two that we already pre-qualified.
Diane, I don't think you heard Rick, when you spoke over him, he said he was happy. I'm happy now, thank you, missed it. We're all good. Okay, somebody make a motion, hurry up!
I'll move that we adopt both. Was it nine and 10, Rick, that you pulled?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt items nine and 10 on our agenda.
And councilmember Leah is going to second that?
Sure.
Okay, and so we have a motion in a second. Please respond to Madam Clerk when she calls your name. This is, this is to award the contract to Anderson Pacific in both of these cases with the understanding that there will be a monitor onsite, as Azalea just pointed out.
And Mr. Mayor, I just, I want to clarify that nobody ever raised their hands from the attendee list, so we did have no public comment on this. So roll call vote, we have councilmember Pappen?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Bonilla?
No.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mayor Gohzal?
Aye.
Thank you, council, appreciate it.
That's four one, thank you, Brad. Thanks, everybody. Moving on to public comment, now is the time for public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Anyone who wishes to make public comment can make that public comment. Now, do we have any, anyone from the general public who would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda?
So members of the public, you need to either press the raise your hand function or if you're calling in, it would be a star nine to raise your hand. So we don't have any call-ins and I don't see anybody raising their hand right now.
So I will close the public comment. That, that's where they are. I just, I just figured out how to see everybody who's attending. Okay. And I don't see anyone raising their hands. So I'll close the public comment period and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our COVID-19 update from our city manager. And I believe we have a PowerPoint presentation. Take it away, Drew.
Drew, I think it was display settings that you could get the full screen.
Drew, run mute.
Okay, sorry, my, okay, I'm off mute now. Let me try this again, sorry. All right, is everyone able to see that?
Yes.
No, I take that back. No, no, we cannot.
All right, one second. Okay, are you able to see that?
Yes.
Okay. Pardon my technical difficulties. Okay, so here we are for this week's COVID-19 update. This is our seventh week of updates on this. As you're aware, last week, the health officer issued a new order that was effective today. It did loosen some of the restrictions. Gardening and landscaping are now allowed. All construction activity has been allowed to resume. Certain recreational activities have been allowed to resume and the new order also allows for more childcare programs to operate. So in light of this, we've made some operational adjustments. Our development review process is now full service. Our online permit center went live today and it permits, permits and plan reviews to be submitted and processed electronically. We issued 30 building permits today via our online permit center, so very exciting.
Wow.
We've pulled, CDD has, has become fully operational and they're still doing most of it remotely. Kohar and her team did an amazing job during the shelter in place while, while folks were working remotely to get this underway. So it's very exciting that we're able to provide this level of service to our community. Our, we're taking appointments for virtual code consultations and plan reviews right now. Our building inspections where possible are done via video and we are going onsite as needed. And our code enforcement is focused really for, for the time being on construction site safety protocol, so making sure that the sites are adhering to the county's orders as they are now back to operations. So for recreation, the golf course, we're planning on opening it up on Wednesday. We're putting, implementing industry best practices into the operation. We're limiting the tee times to San Mateo County residents to, to comply with the shelter in place order of not going beyond 10 miles to recreate. We're staggering the tee times a little bit longer than we normally would. The driving range isn't open and we're putting other, other things in place to, to ensure that people are able to play safely and within social distancing protocols. We've also opened, opening up more passive recreation space in our parks. However, the parks are still very limited. The purely athletic fields remain closed, as do the facilities and the restrooms and the tennis, tennis and basketball courts. And we're also keeping the parking lots closed for the time being. We are planning now for limited summer recreation programming with a focus on day camps that serve the childcare need. Unfortunately, we are looking at some cancellations of some of our summer staples. We are not planning on being able to open up the pools this summer. We also don't believe that we'll be able to have the summer concert series or September nights on B Street. As to next steps, we are tentatively planning for a June 1st soft opening of City Hall. And what I mean by that is based on the current order and where things are, we don't expect that we'll be able to have everyone back in City Hall when we're allowed to reopen. And so we will, still, I still, I believe we'll still have people, some people working remotely and kind of rotating back through City Hall as we can. And we also won't be able to sort of fully operate the, the counters as we, as we would before the shelter in place. So, so we're preparing for that. We've got a team working and I think we're ready to go. And so whenever we're able to open, we will do so. We're closely monitoring the activity at the state and county level and we'll adjust as appropriate to the extent the orders change between now and May 31st. I did want to let you know about a special leave that I've granted to emergency responders. And this would be a half day of leave that's earned for every full day worked in the field between March 17th and April 19th, up to a maximum of 96 hours. These leaves, this leave is not able to be cashed out and it has no expiration date. And it's intended to be taken when backfill overtime will not be necessary. Now, what I wanted to point out here is that these emergency responders are different from disaster service workers. We're all disaster service workers as city employees, but these, these emergency responders were specific classifications that I had to identify and exempt from a federal COVID-19 related leave benefit that was for employees and their families. So because of their classification as emergency responders, they were not eligible for this benefit. So this leave is intended to compensate for that. And this primarily impacts police department personnel, folks at the wastewater treatment plant and our field and maintenance classifications. So moving on to redeployment and business outreach, we've at this point got 22 employees in redeployment and all of them are assigned. We are starting the wind down process as we're ramping back up our community development department operations, certain employees that were redeployed will be moving back to their core jobs. On business outreach, we've made 817 calls to businesses through last Friday. And for our $400,000 contribution to business assistance, we had a total of, well, there were a total of 12, over 1,200 applications submitted countywide. And SAMCDA is in the process of working with the credit union to get, get more information that they're going to share after the board supervisors meeting on Tuesday. So we'll have a better idea about San Mateo's specific numbers that I can report out later. As far as the Safe Streets Initiative goes, for Monte Diablo and Fremont, which are segments two and three on the map, those are moving forward. We've been working with the neighborhood association and look forward to implementing within the next couple of weeks. Bay Meadows has been operational for about a week and we're reviewing for some potential revisions. In North Shoreview, they didn't want necessarily to do the Safe Streets Initiative, but, but we did work with them and we're planning to do some additional signage on the Bay Trail. And we're still looking to make contact with, with Shoreview about a potential safe street in that neighborhood. And then finally, the childcare facilities fund, there was a question that came up last week as to whether we could retroactively reimburse childcare providers for capital expenditures that they had already incurred. And so as you're aware, the, the utilization of these funds is for capital expenditures only. Reimbursement for capital, for prior capital is permissible. However, the program authorizes that it's, that these funds can only be used for joint ventures with nonprofit entities or be no, low or no interest loans with any provider. So it can only be done as, as a loan with an individual childcare provider. Also, the original nexus study for this fund specifically states that the Bs will not be used for family childcare homes. So with that, I'm looking to get council confirmation on the actions I've taken in response to the emergency proclamation, which would be, which would be the adjustment to the operations and the deployment of personnel, the cancellations of the summer events, the special leave for emergency responders. And further, I'd like to get confirmation of actions that I plan to take, which would be to continue to defer rent to the private tenants of city-owned properties and to also extend the rent commencement date for Rice Pizza by two months. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Drew, I think I say it every week, but this is an incredible amount of information that you've just provided to us in a very short period of time. It's clear you've done a month's work of planning and preparation and, and implementation of all of this in a week. So I can only imagine how long our council meetings would be if, if, if we were going every other week. So I, again, I want to open it up to the city council for any, any questions or comments on anything that you just mentioned.
I have a comment or a question. Yeah. Drew, today we received a letter from the Bay Meadows Neighborhood Alliance. Have you had a chance to look at that?
I've had a chance to look at it and Brad and I have spoken a little bit about it. We, we do think there are a couple of adjustments that can, that can potentially be made to some of the physical structures out there. I'm, I'm not sure if, if adding more signage is, is something we, we need to do. I, I don't think it's a signage issue, but, but we still need to look into it a little bit more.
Thank you. Drew, did you have time to take a look at whether some of those restrictions on the money for daycare centers, whether we could loosen that and possibly make it available to as many as possible? Is there some action that the council would need to take to do that?
Yeah, so they, it is possible and Sean can jump in and correct me if I get anything incorrect, because he helped me with, with this particular portion of the presentation. But so it is our program, so we could change the parameters of it, so council has that ability. However, the caveat there is that the funds that have already been collected can only be used for the purpose they were collected for. So if we were to change the program parameters, we could only use money that we collect going forward under the new program to, to provide any assistance.
Okay, okay, thank you. Looking for other hands or anyone else who has a comment or a question? Go ahead. Councilmember Lee?
Yes, I had a question about the no and low interest rates for the childcare providers. So this would only be for centers? Is there, I mean, do we have the internal capacity to administer these kinds of loans? I thought that that was sort of the, that was the impetus for SAMCDA to go with San Mateo Credit Union as an underwriter. So I, I'm confused why it's, the structure is through loans when my understanding is we didn't have that internal capacity to start with.
So with respect to the use of these funds, I spoke with the staff who work on that program today and it was, it took many years to accumulate sufficient funds to make, make viable projects. And last year, we did issue a notice of, for funding availability and took a number of proposals and then brought back to the council, three loans for three different providers. And, and so those loans actually are administered by our CDD staff for that particular project, that particular program. And so those loans for the use of those funds are administered by our CDD staff. I would note also that those loans are forgivable. And so they, they can actually be, if certain conditions like reserved slots for low income customers are maintained over the years, then the, then the loans actually need not be repaid.
And, and in our last meeting, I think that you had said that the, that the funds can only be used for operational expenses that increase childcare capacity. Is that still a requirement?
Capital, not, not operational, but capital expenses that increase capacities of physical construction to increase capacity is what may be funded out of the loan program.
Capacity being defined by the increased number of children or hours provided in service?
Yeah, so it's adding, you know, facilities, perhaps whatever the, the physical limit is in terms of the number of, of customers that can be served. So if you're adding areas, adding classrooms or adding outdoor area, that eliminates that barrier and allows for greater capacity, that, that improvement can be funded.
But I'm asking, is that, is capacity defined by the additional service hours or hours of operation or contact hours per child or is it additional children served?
That's a, a level of detail that I don't, that I don't have. I'm not sure if Kohar is available and I would have that level of detail.
Well, can I, if I could jump in real quick, councilmember Lee, I think the core question is if it were to, if I have, if I understand, if I'm understanding correctly, it would be if you were adding hours, that, that, that potentially creates additional capacity for, for more children for a longer period of time, but, but the funds still couldn't be used for that purpose if they were considered operational. I mean, you still have, it still has to be capital expenditures and that's, and that's mitigation fee act. So it's, it's not something we have the, we have the ability to change.
Right.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I raise my hand.
Go ahead, Rick, sorry.
Thank you. If I may, I think I'd like to clarify because we're talking about, I think we're talking about two different things. One is the $120,000 that we decided to put in the hands of SAMCDA to use for our local childcare facilities. And then the other is, we were discussing last week, the ability to take money from our, from our childcare fund. And it was determined that that could only be used for capital improvements due to actual increase in capacity size basically of the facility. And so I think that that's, those are two different things. And it's hard to get around the fact that we cannot, and you stated this last week, Sean, we cannot change the use of that money that's already in the pot. We can change the policy and if we do, then money we gain going forward from here would be eligible for that use also. And so I just wanted to make sure we're dividing and recognizing the two different pots of money and the two different kinds of usage. So all of the childcare facilities in San Mateo are eligible for the money that we set aside through the San Mateo Strong Fund, isn't that correct?
Actually, just a point of clarification there, there's actually three buckets of money. There's the $400,000 that we provided to San Mateo County Strong and that was for the business assistance grants. In addition, there was $440,000 worth of CDBG money that went to Samaritan House for rental assistance. $120,000 of that amount was earmarked for, for childcare providers.
And that's what I was talking about. Okay, I'm looking for more hands, any more hands? I see no more hands from councilmembers. I'll look at the attendees. Madam Clerk, do you see any public comment? I don't see any.
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, I do not.
Adam, Alex, anybody, anybody want to talk? Uh, just kidding.
I had another question, sorry.
Yes, please, councilmember Lee.
So, so I was curious about the timeline for making the decision to, to not open up the pools over summer. And you know, if there's, like, what, what is the, what's the operational justification for making a decision like that today versus waiting until later when we have more information?
Drew, you want me to take that one?
Yes, please.
So currently pools.
So currently, pools, public pools are still on the list of closed facilities. I think from an operational standpoint, we would have started back in April to start hiring staff for the summertime. And so I think probably the biggest concern for us right now is if the, if the rules were to change on June 1st, we would not have sufficient staff available to go ahead and staff those pools. It's certainly possible that if the rules change and we had a limited number of staff, that we might be able to open up maybe on the weekends, but without the benefit of that information now. And we're really consistent with all of the other public aquatics programs in San Mateo County. Right now, there isn't a program in San Mateo County from any of the other cities that's planning on operating.
Okay, one more time, Madam Clerk, do you see any questions over from anyone, any of the attendees? I don't see any.
I do not see any either, Mr. Mayor.
I'm gonna bring it back to the council for any final comments or a motion.
I make a motion to confirm and support all of the actions taken by the city manager during the past week and during the entire time of the COVID-19 emergency and include in it the additional items that he added on at the end.
I'll second.
You're here, okay. We have a motion in a second. Please respond to Madam Clerk when she calls your name.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Gothols?
Yes. So that passes unanimously and now we're on to reports and announcements. Is there, no, I, I, just kidding, Sean, I wasn't gonna, wasn't gonna let you off the hook. Go ahead, Sean, you have our final item on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, very brief presentation, no PowerPoint slide. We discussed the election on the measure qualified by the group SMRG and the question was asked whether that election for that measure could be called prior to the last council meeting before the 88 day, before the election, which would be in July. We looked into that and concluded that, that that would be legally permissible for the council to call that election on that measure anytime between May, the next meeting, the 18th, to that meeting in July. And so we're asking for council direction on when you would like to bring that item back for calling that election.
Great. Questions or comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I see no reason why we should not go ahead and do this.
Okay, so when you say go ahead and do this, you mean place Measure P on the ballot at the next council meeting, which is May 18th, is that right?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Sean, let me see. Sorry, I had a question and it floated out of my brain. It had to do with placing it on the ballot is one thing, there's also some other things that are usually done. For example, you're gonna write a description of the ballot measure for the ballot and you're, and then there's also the matter of writing the ballot arguments for and against.
That's right.
And we, can we do that in the same meeting or it doesn't matter, I guess?
Yeah, so the procedure for identifying the, who may draft the arguments is provided for in the resolution calling the election. And in addition to the action, calling the election on the measure, there's the calling of the election for the two council seats that will be open and then adopting resolution by which the city requests consolidation of the election with the other elections being conducted at the same time. And so, which would allow the county elections official to conduct the election.
Okay. So what I hear is, actually, before I move on, any other questions or comments from any council members? Any public? I see a hand raised for public comment here. I'm gonna go to the public comment at this time. Alex Melendez has a public comment that he would like to make and you have unmuted yourself. Alex, go ahead and state your public comment. I'm gonna ask the clerk to start a timer for three minutes. Go ahead, Alex.
Can you hear me? I just checked.
We can hear you, yes.
Great. Hello, San Mateo City Council, City Staff, Alex Melendez with the Housing Leadership Council. As an organization with roughly two decades of experience working with communities and their leaders to produce and preserve quality affordable homes, we would just like to reiterate that exclusionary zoning does not create affordable housing, it restricts it. And to be clear, we're not commenting on whether the ballot measure, ballot measure should or should not go on the ballot, we're simply stating that the measure is poorly written and conflicts with the city's current general plans and is exclusionary. And to please place it on the ballot so voters can have the opportunity to reject it, this, this out of date policy. Last week, the Planning Commission and the city reviewed an amazing opportunity to increase the number of homes for an affordable housing proposal. And while the original proposal was good, it was capped at 164 homes. The addition of 61 affordable homes to 225 would not have been possible with the restrictions put in place by Measure P. That's 61 additional homes near transit for San Mateo workers and community members who would not be allowed under Measure P. There will be future opportunities where, for affordable housing that will not be met by state law. And every home has a name, a face and a story. The housing crisis has not gone away and exclusionary zoning and restrictions just end up becoming restrictions on people and limit the future and hope for community members finding a secure shelter and a place to call their own. I thank you for the opportunity to comment and, Mr. Mayor, you really freaked me out earlier when you called my name and wasn't ready.
It's, it's okay, you only have five more minutes left. Go ahead, keep, keep going. Just kidding, just kidding. Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you, Alex. I see another hand from Stuart. Stuart, you are unmuted. Go ahead. Thank you, Stuart. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Stuart Highland, Organizing Director with Housing Leadership Council. And I'm not gonna reiterate everything Alex said, but really looking forward to the November election as an opportunity to make lots of great change. And so placing this on the ballot at that time enables a lot more San Mateo residents to have input at that time. There's so many folks will be prepared to participate in the election, so I encourage consolidating and having this placed on the November ballot as well. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Stuart. I appreciate the comments. Any further public comment at this time? If you can't figure out how to raise your hand, go ahead and unmute yourself and start talking and we'll figure out who you are. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, do you see any other hands?
No, sir, I do not.
Then I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comment period, bring it back to the Rick, that was kind of like a motion, what you did earlier. Do you want to make the motion? Does anybody want to second Rick's silent motion? There, I'm here. Yes, thank you. Yes, I would make that motion to support the council and the city attorney's office taking appropriate actions to, during the coming weeks, to put this on the ballot. Great, there's a motion?
At our next, at our next meeting, Rick.
May 18th.
May 18th.
I'll second.
Excellent, there's a motion in a second, all in favor, please respond to the clerk.
Councilmember Bonilla?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappan?
Yes.
Mayor Gothols?
Yes. So that passes unanimously. I want to make a recommendation that the Ledge Committee, the Ledge Subcommittee of our council meet and confer for a recommendation on whether the council should support the Everyone think that that's a good idea? I'm seeing heads nodding, head, head, head. That would be, that would be the mayor and the deputy mayor meeting to consult on and make a recommendation back to the council on whether to support the measure or not. Diane?
I'm not, is that what the Ledge Committee is supposed to do? I thought it was matters outside of what the council will be taking up. I just want some clarification. I'm not adverse one way or the other, but I, I'd like clarification to make sure we're following procedure here.
Sean, do you want to think about that? My thought would be, we have a legislative Subcommittee, this is one of the things that they can do.
Sean's hitting the books.
Yeah, it's okay. And it, what else was I gonna say? Actually, that's all for now. Go ahead, Eric.
I just wanted to bring up, I know that there, there's been a lot of studies and I don't know how scientific, scientific they are, but I know that a lot of cities has been looking into perhaps opening up some streets to, for businesses. So as a kind of easing into the situation where we're gonna be opening restaurants, perhaps letting them be, go out on our streets so that they ease with, with social distancing. And I was wondering, in conjunction with our actions at the last Blue Sky meeting where we said we wanted to close down portions of our streets in downtown, if, if this council would be interested in directing staff to look into perhaps piloting some sort of program where we're, we're not only piloting the closing off the streets like we were gonna do anyway, but we kind of help our downtown restaurants maybe get some, some parts of that street to enable it to make it, make it better or something like that.
I think you're right there on the same page as the rest of us. I think Drew and I had this conversation today and I was mentioning three restaurant owners who, who are very supportive of this idea. I think that we can direct staff. Eric, if you want to be on the task force, I think that's great, but I think we can direct staff to work with the, the business owners who've already reached out to me and who are interested. And based on my conversation with Drew earlier today, it's not just a matter of closing down some streets in downtown San Mateo, although B Street would be perfect for this. I think there are other places that could also use a parklet or anything that adds some outdoor seating so that people can be further apart from each other. 25th Avenue might be a place that works. There's probably other places around San Mateo that I'm not thinking of right now, but I, I just think we should direct staff to reach out to the business community, especially the restaurants, and come back with a recommendation at the, at the earliest possible council meeting, not necessarily next week, but as soon as possible. Eric, you like that idea, yes?
No.
Okay.
And just, if I, if I could, just very briefly, yes, thank you for the suggestion. We've, we've been, started having that conversation internally today as well. And so we're aware that, of the situation with the restaurants in terms of their ability to reopen. And so we are, we're on it and we will come back to council as soon as possible with, with more information.
That's great. Excellent. One brief side note, you gotta make sure they can serve alcohol outside. That's an important part of this, if we're gonna keep them in business. Anything else before we kick it back to Sean? Sean, what say you?
So the guidelines, the council guidelines do speak to the Legislative Committee as being its purpose to respond to state and federal legislation. But that, there's, either our guidelines or that's not a legal limit if the council is okay with the committee taking up issues, but according to the guidelines, that's the purpose of the committee.
Okay. Does, let's don't call it the Legislative Committee. Okay. Does anybody else want to meet?
The reason why I brought it up is because this happened before and I remember thinking. So I, I just don't want to set that precedent under the Legislative Subcommittee. I think Rick has a great idea and the two of you are more than welcome to meet about it. I just remember before it became quite a large issue in my world.
I.
Which one of your world?
As I recall, as I recall, this is exactly what the Ledge Committee did. At one point, I recall, in fact.
See, I had understood it while you're thinking, I had understood it to be, as it relates to matters that really aren't coming before us. Now, we will be voting to put this on the ballot, but it's not technically really coming before us. But I'm certainly not adverse to you both meeting and talking about it if you want to do it in a, maybe a Subcommittee capacity, be fine by me. I just want to keep that legislative tool in a separate toolbox, if you will.
Was it not the Legislative Committee in 2016 that, that held, we actually held a hearing when we were deciding what our recommendation was gonna be on Measure Q?
That's right.
I, I have memories of that Subcommittee meeting.
I'm sure you do.
I, I already heard Eric volunteer. I don't care what you call it. Eric and I will meet, we will Zoom together and then we will come back with a recommendation for all of you.
Sounds good to me.
Excellent. And I was gonna mention the, the businesses and restaurants who, who are really hot for this idea. I think it's one of the only ways we're gonna keep them in business. Is there anything else for the good of the order during reports and announcements? Yes. Councilmember Pappan?
So, you know, we've been sort of separated through this process, obviously, and I know though that each of us are continuing to work with staff and I, and we're always very appreciative of what staff does, but as time goes on, I think the, you know, the strain of it all continues to accumulate. So I, I'd just like to invite my council members along with me to just give them a shout out and say we really appreciate all that they've had to endure.
Absolutely. Well said. Thank you, staff. Well said, Diane. Well said. With that, I, I know several of you were there this morning at the county hospital to cheer on our first responders as well and to wish them a fabulous May the 4th. So I will let you all, I think, are, Rich Lee, Rich Lee is not showing us his video because he's actually right in the middle of episode two right now and he's gonna be watching all nine tonight. So anyway, everyone have a good, everyone have a good night. We'll see you again next week and for anyone who's interested, we have a Fire Board meeting on Wednesday night, right Drew?
Correct.
See you then. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night.